Manager, when I was at the Greater Portland Inc., got to know her.
Good morning. I will now call to order the October 7, 2021, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today, Clerk to the Board, Mary Bork, supported by Christina Twilliger, County Council Stephen Madcor. Commissioner Martha Schrader is attending a National Association of Counties event today and will not be present. With that roll call, Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Scholl?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Chair Smith.
Thank you. Please rise. I will now lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you to do that when the time is right. Today, we have one public hearing and will take public comment for each item as listed on the agenda. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. Registration for public comment will close at five minutes past 10:00. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you tee up the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith, thank you. First, we have wildfire updates. Presenting will be Jamie Poole, who is a Disaster Management Manager within our Disaster Management Department. She is on Zoom, so we'll load her into the room here. One moment, please. All right, one moment, please.
Just still looking for her.
That's all right. We'll just get the technology loaded up. Nothing wrong with that.
All right, good morning.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. So I am providing an update for the Bull Complex fire, which is currently at 24,894 acres, which is the same as last Thursday. Containment is at 25%, which is an increase of 5% since last Thursday. Personnel on the fire is 125, which is a decrease of 225 individuals since last Thursday. This decrease in personnel reflects the decreased staffing needs to meet the incident objectives. The fire behavior has been minimal, and fire activity is anticipated to remain minimal with the forecasted weather, which is great news. Current work on the fire includes suppression repair work and fuel reduction. And other good news is that structure protection wrap is being removed from Bagby Hot Springs and Hawk Mountain Cabin, as well as Gold Butte Lookout. There are currently no evacuation orders for this fire, so very good outlook. Are there any questions?
Any questions to the presenter regarding the wildfire update? Commissioner Fisher?
Thanks, Jamie. Appreciate the report. Could you, I just missed it, the Bagby Hot Springs, what's happening around there?
Oh, sure. So they have wrapped those structures with a protection so that if fire were to come through there, that it would, you know, protect those structures. They're actually removing that wrap as, you know, everything's looking favorable. It's not looking like the fire will go through that area.
Okay, thank you. Now I understand. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for the presenter? Seeing none.
Great. Thank you, Jamie, very much. So Commissioners, we will, we will take this off your upcoming agendas until such time as there is a need to bring it back to you, and then we'll do that. But for now, because it's staying pretty stable, we'll take off wildfire updates, at least for the next several weeks. Next is COVID-19 updates. Philip Mason-Joener, Public Health Director for Clackamas County, will present. He is also on Zoom. So one moment, please. And, oh, he's here already. All right, Philip, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. And Mary, if you can please pull up the slide deck, we'll share this week's updates on COVID-19 response. Apologies, Mary. I sent the slide deck to the Clerk to the Board yesterday. This is the Board report.
Thank you.
Philip, why don't you start, and while we're getting this loaded, please?
Sure, no problem. One second to pull them up. Okay, in terms of our weekly case and death data for the past week, Clackamas County has 663 new cases and two deaths. A little over 1,100 cases and seven deaths. And in Washington County, 874 and seven deaths. September of 2021 was the second deadliest month for COVID-19 statewide. So the three highest months for deaths throughout the span of the pandemic have been December 2020, January 2021, and this past month of September 2021. Our weekly case count, as I just shared, it is lower. We had a 25% decrease in the number of cases locally here in Clackamas County. So that is really great. Last week, we went up a little bit. Now we've gone down drastically, so that's really good. We hope that this trend can continue. But we are, the forecast is showing a little bit of a jagged sort of week-to-week, up and down a little bit, but hopefully continuing to head in the right direction. Hospitalizations, they're also down, and I'm on slide number four. We have 696 COVID-positive patients in Oregon hospitals statewide this week. So that's looking a lot better in terms of hospital bed capacity. 26 adult ICU beds available in our region out of 328. That's reflected right here. And then pediatric cases continue to be a little bit higher. That's been anticipated with kids returning back to extracurricular activities and back to school. Higher cases of hospitalizations for pediatrics, individuals from age zero to 18, is still very, very, very low. Not cause for concern at this time, and more information on that is in the Board report this week. Next slide, please. For vaccination, we did finally hit the milestone of over 270,000 of our Clackamas County community members receiving at least one dose of the vaccine. So that's great news. This past week, locally at Clackamas County Public Health, it has been pretty busy. Countywide, over 6,000 doses administered, an uptake because of the booster shots for Pfizer now being available, but also continue to be very focused on providing first and second doses. Next slide, please. This was a data request from Commissioner Savis last week. Just a little bit of data in terms of what we're seeing. There's a lot of different ways to analyze the data. But right now, for adults over the age of 18, Clackamas County is at 73.7%. Statewide is at 75.7% in Oregon, in terms of the entire Clackamas County population. So factoring in younger people, 59.4%. And soon, we're anticipating Pfizer has submitted the request to the FDA for ages 5 to 11-year-olds to be eligible to receive the vaccine. That represents a little over 35,000 children in our community here in Clackamas County. And if all of them received the vaccine, as an entire population in Clackamas County, we would be at 67.8%. Clackamas County Public Health, we have started to provide both booster shots and third doses. You may remember, a lot of the Pfizer was going to the hospitals initially, and we primarily had been, early on, at the start of 2021, providing Moderna vaccines. So the booster is available for those who had Pfizer. I do anticipate, if and when Moderna is approved to provide booster shots, that we will certainly need to surge up and be ready and prepared for that, which I'm confident we will be. Next slide, please. Here's just an update on some of the interesting data, just a couple snapshots from what's in our weekly report in terms of different age groups and the vaccination rates. So seeing, you know, lower with younger folks, and age 60 to 69 certainly stands out. Next slide, please. We continue to be very focused on addressing disparities around access and providing outreach and education that is culturally specific for populations. The lowest population here is represented in our Latinx population, a little under 50%, and this is specifically for adults over the age of 18. So that's why the work we're doing with culturally specific community partners, partners and nonprofits out in the community is just so important to continue to reach these populations. Next slide, please. Schools, schools certainly, we are putting a lot of attention and resources for our schools. We all share the goal of having schools be back in person and learning in the classroom. And I do want to provide some up-to-date information, just in terms of public health role and the schools' role. We do partner together. But isolation and quarantine requirements are set by local and state public health. The state has submitted guidance. That is what Clackamas County Public Health is following and working with our schools on specifically, and they're listed here. So for individuals who test positive, they are to isolate for 10 days. And isolation ends when their symptoms approve and 24 hours after their fever is gone. So some folks actually have to isolate for a little bit longer than 10 days.
Excuse me, Philip?
Quarantining, yes.
Yes, Gary, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Philip. So a constituent asked a question about school quarantines last week at the business meeting, and I gave incorrect information, and I apologize to you, Board, and the constituent, which is why Philip is clarifying here. But Philip, I'm sorry to jump on your comments. Can you, but can you just triple confirm, Philip, the state makes these guidelines, and the counties implement the state guidelines. We are not creating our own guidelines. Is that correct?
That's correct. Isolation and quarantine guidelines or requirements are actually in state statute that we, that local and state public health have those authorities. The state has set the guidelines. We are following those guidelines locally. The local health departments can have more restrictive requirements, but we've chosen not to do that. We are aligning fully with what the state guidelines are at this time. And for, I know there's a lot of interest in families around quarantine, so folks who have been exposed but have not, have been exposed but are not positive for the virus, they've been in close contact with someone who is, was tested positive. The state guidelines, guidance at this point is that 14 days is highly recommended, but 10 days is allowed, as long as you don't have symptoms. And that's what we're following. The confusing part is, I guess, the CDC has said that there is an option for a seven-day, seven-day option if you get a negative test, but that's something that the state of Oregon is not providing guidance on at this time, mostly due to testing capacity available across our state, and also, also some of the logistics that are complicated in order to implement that locally within our schools. It's a slow to spread disease within the school. There's been a lot of issues in communities that have tried that here in our state. And also, at this time, you know, it's being looked at, and if the state of Oregon changes that guidance, we will certainly adapt. But with such high community spread, we hope that our case count can continue to move in the right direction where that would be an option for Oregon. Next slide, please. Oh, so that's, for the most part, the end of my remarks this week. Just want to continue to always show this slide that the vaccine is available. There's ample supplies available. We're located in clinics across the county. Pharmacies across the community still continue to have first and second dose boosters available. We also have mobile teams available that will go to where you're at. Feel free to email us at covidvaccine@clackamas.us or call our call center at 503-655-8224. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Philip. Commissioner Fisher, your hand is up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Philip, it says that if there is a lab-confirmed or presumptive positive case, what is, what qualifies as presumptive positive? What's the criteria for that?
Presumptive would be you're symptomatic, or you've been in close contact, and you're waiting on your test result. Confirmed means you already have the test result back, and it's positive.
Okay. With so many colds going around, and I know this because I've had so many people in my world having to go get a COVID test, and they're coming back negative, but they have to wait for quite a while to get your test results, like 24 to 48 hours. I'm concerned about what happens if somebody has symptoms, like if a kid in school has symptoms, but then they test negative. I mean, what is the protocol there? Any protocol? Kids can go back to school once they test negative?
Once you test negatives and you don't have COVID-like symptoms, which I know are very big and broad, once you don't have symptoms, you can return back to your daily activities.
Okay, so anybody with a cold-like symptoms or allergy symptoms can't go to school?
For the most part, correct. Yep. I mean, I think allergies there is a little bit, I would say folks need to talk to their healthcare provider and their school around their, that the school nurse around that. So it's hard to generalize, but in general, you know, good health is, if you have symptoms, you need to, you need to stay home to protect others from spreading whatever, whatever risk there may be.
So Philip, what you're saying, basically, if you're sick, just stay home, whatever it is. Commissioner Fisher, please continue.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm concerned about how long it takes to get tests back. Is there any effort to have at-home tests or ways to get COVID tested more quickly?
Yeah, there are. Rapid tests are becoming more available. I know that that's a federal issue, too, and the federal administration's looking at providing more rapid tests that are available for the community. You know, you can buy them, but I do think that there's an economic hardship there. And, you know, our healthcare resources are stretched to be able to provide vaccine, be able to treat folks for COVID, and also other healthcare needs, and to provide the testing. There's also strains on our lab capacity. So our healthcare resources are not infinite. Yeah, it continues to be a challenge, which is why we're still sort of in this, this emergency situation that we see ourselves in.
Yeah. And then my last question is, the guidelines that you listed were for unvaccinated and isolation periods. Is there a difference for vaccinated?
Thanks. Yeah, I sort of moved over that quickly. Fully, individuals who are fully vaccinated that have been in close contact with someone do not have to quarantine. So that certainly is a benefit, as long as you don't have symptoms.
Okay, but if symptoms, then the same quarantine rules apply for vaccinated as unvaccinated?
Yes, sorry, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah. First of all, Philip, thank you for including that information I requested last week about 5-11-year-olds. So that will hopefully help significantly, especially when it comes to school and public health in school with regards to COVID. I did have a question. I've been hearing some concerns and difficulties on people trying to achieve or get a test that they can either go to their doctor with if required to have a COVID test. And so, and you kind of touched on it just, just a moment, just a little bit ago. It sounds like it's more significant than it was here just a few months ago. Do you have any data on that, as far as, I'm not talking about the ones you purchased, but the ones that you can actually validate, you know, a valid COVID test today and the ease of people getting that? I'm hearing that's getting very difficult.
Yeah, it is. Let me chat with our, we actually have a staff member now who's dedicated full-time to work around these testing issues. So let me, let me talk to him and see if I can pull some of that data and information for next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Philip. Any other questions for the presenter? Seeing none. Thanks a lot, Philip, for that wonderful update. Gary?
Thank you, Philip. Next, Commissioners, you have a public hearing. Your first and only public hearing today is approval of a board order offering to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the City of Oregon City for a portion of Maple Lane Court and Maple Lane Road. Mike Baze from the Department of Transportation and Development will present. Go ahead, please, Mike.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. My name is Michael Baze. I represent the County's Department of Transportation and Development. Today, we have before you a request to approve a board order for the transfer of jurisdiction of portions of Maple Lane Court and Maple Lane Road from Clackamas County to the City of Oregon City. This request has been discussed by the staff of both jurisdictions, and both jurisdictions have approved an intergovernmental agreement pertaining to this transfer. Clackamas County and the City of Oregon City have agreed to the transfer of portions of Maple Lane Court and Maple Lane Road to the city with the intent of streamlining roadway improvements and limiting confusion to the public and to improve the efficiencies of maintenance and public service. The portions of Maple Lane Court and Maple Lane Road to be transferred are located entirely within the city, the city limits of Oregon City. Clackamas County has agreed to provide the City of Oregon City funds in the amount of $29,384, which represents the cost of a two-inch overlay, asphalt overlay, on the portions of the road being transferred. The portion of Maple Lane Court and Maple Lane Road to be transferred is approximately 1,606 feet long. It contains approximately 96,367 square feet of right-of-way. A notice of today's action was published for four consecutive weeks in the Clackamas Review. This request is consistent with the county's practice and policy of partnering with local jurisdictions to provide the necessary government services at the least cost to our citizens. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to reply. Thank you.
Does any Commissioner have qualifying questions at this time? Seeing none. I will now open the public hearing and ask anyone who wants to speak. I will take the in-person person first. I see none in the room. Mary, is there anybody online who wishes to testify on this?
No, Chair, there is not.
There is not? Okay, thank you. That is the end of our list. I will now close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board order offering to transfer jurisdiction from Clackamas County to the City of Oregon City for a portion of Maple Lane Court and Maple Lane Road, County Road Number 0398, DDT Number 32104, and DTD Number 32001.
Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Scholl to transfer jurisdiction of Maple Lane, and it's been seconded by Paul Savis. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none. Mary, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much, Michael. Gary, would you introduce the next item?
Yes, Chair Smith, thank you. Next is our board discussion items. These are items that are discussed by the board only, followed by board action. Because we did not have issues last week, we are bringing to you what normally would be consent agenda items, but we're going to have them as discussion items so that you can discuss and ask any questions you may have of staff. We'll have each, there's three departments today. We'll have each department present, similar to what we do on Tuesdays, and then you will vote on all those department items at once instead of each individual item. So we haven't done this in a while, so we'll, we'll try this process today. We'll start with Health, Housing and Human Services. Rod Cook is the Director of Health, Housing and Human Services. Please come forward, Rod. Rod, we'll do this just like we do on Tuesdays, so I'll introduce the item. You can just give a one- or two-minute quick update, and then the Board can ask any questions. Right?
Where do we find what he's referring to?
All right, so it's, it's on the agenda as a board discussion item. It should be on the business meeting packet, the agenda packet online.
Okay, so we've got agenda, public hearing, board order, board order, board order, board order, board order.
Is it, is it listed as a board order, Mary?
I'm sorry?
So the discussion items, like A1, where will that be on? Is, it should be a board order, yes.
Under the agenda?
Yeah, she's like, she's looking at the bookmark on the agenda.
You have a printed item?
No, I got it printed, yeah.
Okay, is it H3S Number 10278, Dirgash?
Yes, that, that's, yes, it is.
Let's wait, tell everybody.
Thank you.
They're titled "Board Orders" on the bookmark on your PDF.
Okay, I'm ready to go. Go, take it away.
Just a minute.
Okay.
I'm just gonna wait till it loads up.
It's a new process, so we'll.
Sometimes loading up our devices takes me a few minutes in this hearing room. We'll just wait. We have time.
You just, you tell us when you're ready, Chair.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Very good. So the first item, under Health, Housing and Human Services, Item 1, Approval of a Contract with Dirgash LLC for On-Call Hotel Rooms for Temporary Housing Participants. Maximum Contract Value is $582,400, funded through Metro Supportive Housing and Services Fund. No County General Funds are involved. Rod?
Yes, this past winter and spring, the county, through SSD, Social Services Division, developed a non-congregate hotel shelter program for houseless persons who were at high risk of a COVID-19 infection due to age or health conditions. There are approximately 115 households still housed in hotels. To avoid transitioning people back into the unhoused situation, while partner agencies assist them with obtaining permanent housing, the county will contract with motel hotel owners or operators to provide safety and temporary housing. And again, no general funds are involved with this particular agreement.
Commissioner Savis?
Thank you, Rod. So how many hotels are currently, are we utilizing today?
I'm only, this, this contract is with one particular. I believe there are actually two different hotels that I know about. There may be more. They're coming online and offline as we move people out. as we move people out.
Right. You know, I anticipated having this discussion in our Tuesday work session, so a little bit awkward, so.
Okay.
But I'm gonna take this opportunity to explain, and correct me if I'm wrong at all, please, and don't, just be candid. If I make any errors, I want to make sure I'm not misspeaking. But when we, when, I think it was Jill, when our HACC staff presented the budget to us, I believe in May, June, and we were talking about the cost of putting together our $10 million budget on the board's request, each of my colleagues is very concerned and passionate about making sure we didn't put anyone on the street. We had these hotels that were being funded with FEMA dollars at the time, as I recall. And, but what we discovered in that conversation, then, and I remember I pointed it out at that time, is that on a per-person basis for sheltering, this was the most expensive, exorbitantly expensive compared to all the other shelter methods. And I know that staff has, you know, recognizes that, has been making a great effort to try to reduce that financial burden and transition those people into permanent housing, so we can reduce that. But I think what needs to be highlighted here, and I want my colleagues to understand that, that some of the pressure that we're getting from some of the nonprofits, that expected contracts sooner, or that the funds aren't going very far, that because that FEMA funding stopped, we're now using, this, I think it was $5 million is what all of that, that cost for a nine-month period, not a 12-month period, but $5 million, it was absorbed in that $10 million budget. So I know staff's making a concerted effort, thank you, for reducing that, but that is a big reason why we don't have a lot of other dollars going out on the street, because this has taken up so much and it's so expensive. Support this, but do you have any kind of forecast as to, or, we were getting reports, Gary, I'm looking at you, we were getting reports from staff on sheltering in general, and we haven't had one in quite a while, but my question would be, is making progress on this, and also how the other shelters are doing? Community concerns, issues, law enforcement issues at some of these hotels, neighborhood concerns about some of this has been propping up. I mean, I hear it almost constantly now. So I'd certainly like to know what the progress we're making, and, not today, but I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to make sure, I'm making a point, that we bring back a report about how that's going, because it's been an issue not just in Clackamas County, but in the other two counties as well.
Okay, could absolutely do that for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, continue. Go ahead, Rod, continue. We're gonna go through the list.
Oh, Chair, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fisher?
That's okay. I just, with all fairness, I just turned it on. Commissioner Savas? Stop talking. I just wanted to comment that the FEMA dollars were absolutely essential during COVID to get people who were unsheltered into shelter that was safe, and I'm hoping that the commission will look at continuing that with some ARPA dollars, because, you know, is COVID-related, so I'm hoping that we can get there and look at that. I just had a wonderful conversation with Chief Band, who was telling me this morning how effective it has been to have people in this type of shelter, because staff can really work with them to get them, transition them into more stabilized housing, and it's been very effective. And I didn't get a lot of time to talk to him, because of course I have to come here to join all of you, but really important for us to keep focused on what the outcome is from the, from the programs that we are investing in. So I appreciate that.
Thank you for that comment.
All right, if there are no further questions, we'll move on to item two, approval of an amendment to sub-recipient agreement with Cascadia Behavioral Health Care for Residential Treatment Services. Maximum agreement value remains $334,894, funded through the State of Oregon Community Mental Health Program. No county general funds are involved. Go ahead, Rod.
Yes, and this agreement or amendment would extend the term of the existing agreement by three months to ensure no gap in services during the completion of a formal procurement process. And so basically, by, basically what I just said, if we extend this, there won't be any gaps in services, that's our intent here. No additional dollars, and no general fund is involved with this particular process.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted to just plant in people's mind, especially with Commissioner Savas talking about the expense, which is really important to recognize, is that when we do come back to talk about this as a commission, it'd be really helpful to look at the cost-benefit analysis as if the county were to purchase. Jill Smith did some of that work. The cost savings is pretty remarkable, and while the Oregon Community Foundation had dollars available for wildfire counties, and we missed that opportunity, I expect there will be other opportunities, and other jurisdictions in the region are purchasing motels to bring down those costs and doing this kind of work. So I don't want us to lose out on that potential, so planting that seed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, well, thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for raising that. I, as you recall, we certainly looked into, into that, and we had a specific facility in Clackamas County we were looking at, due to its larger capacity, I think it was like 50, 52 or 53 rooms that we could have purchased, and I know we made a concerted effort to use those dollars for that. And I think it also should be recognized that, as you look around the county, or the region that is, and other counties, and actually in history, there has been success with that and a lot of problems with that as well, and that being really the, the, I'm looking for the word, structural integrity of the building and the health issues with some of these, some of these buildings, so that, you know, we don't purchase like the building we had in Gladstone, that we, on Webster Road, the Webster Road Project, where we were led to believe it was similar to, you know, like any other purchased property, and it turned out to be several times more expensive than we thought, and years longer to actually move people in. We still haven't moved people in the Webster Road Project, and it's something we started in 2016 or 2018. So as I recall, those dollars were contingent upon us actually housing people and not, not putting a chain-link fence around the building or the structure and closing it due to health concerns. So I certainly want to step up, as we did before, and restart the conversations about sheltering and finding cost-effective ways to shelter people. The Veterans Village has been a successful model. We haven't had any really major problems like we had, you know, like we're currently having with the hotels. And I think for, bang for the dollars, it's getting most out of taxpayer dollars, and with the Supportive Housing Services dollars coming sometime next year, I'm hoping we can find ways of doing that effectively and efficiently. And so I want to, I really want to start that conversation. It's certainly happening to the north of us, and they're looking at models where we can use, stretch those dollars as far as possible and provide, provide that housing. I know that there's been some resistance to some of those models, and I was hoping that we could make progress with that, but we didn't get there last year and the year before. Hopefully, we can.
Are you finished? Paul, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Well, as a matter of fact, for a point of clarification, Clackamas County made offers on three hotels in our county, and they were all rejected for one reason or another. And just because Clackamas County did not buy those hotels, that particular pot of money was put back, that particular grant was put back into a pot of money. Multnomah County was able to utilize it, so as region-wide, it was successful on that, although Clackamas County were still, you know, subject to funding, trying to figure that out. And part of the problem with purchasing a hotel is finding a willing seller who wants to sell it for the price that has been allocated to us to purchase it for. That is an issue. Washington County, talking to my colleagues over there, has had the same situation running up again. I believe they purchased one recently on that. So it's a, it's a situation that takes some nuancing and time to do. Commissioner Fisher, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I don't recall us making offers on three hotels, but when we bring back this issue, I think looking at it and the cost benefits and what, because Commissioner Savas is right, you know, we don't want to, we saw that with, we've learned that you do not buy something that is dilapidated and is a money pit. We know that, and we would never do that. So you have to make sure that your purchases are with due diligence. But I would really like to bring that back and have that analysis, because Commissioner Savas is right, we have to look at all sheltering, and just to put a little bug in your ear, Rod, you may be aware of some of the innovative thinking that Homer Williams has been doing about sheltering with safe temporary shelter, so to bring back some of those ideas. This issue, I'm concerned, is going to get much worse with, right now, the rent eviction moratorium has ended, and landlords and tenants are waiting for this money that's very, 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 very slow. We are going to see an increase in people being evicted, and this problem is just going to get worse. So the quicker we can work on it, the better. We're already way behind the curve, so appreciate the conversation.
Mr. Savas?
Yeah, I just want to just, I did this Friday and Saturday, Saturday especially at the C4 Retreat, and that was, we have a lot of new elected officials in positions, and we were having the conversation with Homer Williams and other developers about this crisis, this, you know, human crisis of homelessness and poverty, and knowing the numbers are probably unfortunately going to get, likely to get worse. You know, I was pushing in hard for any displacement, displacement challenges with people, and, you know, just like you said, I'm gonna use the word displacement to basically make that very clear, when people lose their, the roof over their head, and they're out on the street, or whatever the causes are, that's displacement. And I appreciate staff's hard work in finally putting together, earlier this year, that session, we had some experts in that field come and talk to us. I was hoping, frankly, that, you know, the city engagement and the engagement of my colleagues on the panels we put together, and on that anti-displacement, would take root and take traction, even with the District 8. A year ago, I believe, we raised it, or a year and a half ago, two years ago, raised a District 8 as a closing agenda item to move forward, and that did not move forward with the previous, not you, Chair, not you, Commissioner Fisher, but the previous chair of District 8. I'm just befuddled as to why that, that such a critical, a critical element of what's causing homelessness and the displacement elements of that is not being supported by a lot of elected officials.
Yeah.
It needs to be.
Chair Smith, may I just make a comment real quick? Commissioner Savas, I think your voice on this has been well-received in our community, and when you look at the strategies that the community embraced, when you, Park Avenue development and other types of zoning changes, the conversation of displacement has been front and center. And it's critically important to have those strategies as we move forward, and you've done an excellent job at bringing those issues to light, and I just want to thank you for that.
I appreciate it. I just, hopefully, we can turn that into action.
And we can never stop considering that as a key criteria of how we move forward in the work that we do.
Yeah, I would say that the people that don't have anything similar to the Veterans Village, you know, I would consider that, what was the words you used in the past? Not insufficient, but there was a term you used, and I just hope that we can think about it a little bit differently this time.
Oh, substandard, I think, yeah, if people are put into...
We had people...
Without heat or air conditioning or electricity that are not really habitable, I get very concerned.
Yeah, and I was very pleased and reassured that we had people from around the country, people from Washington DC, federal housing authorities, experts in this, come and look at our facility, and their words weren't anywhere near substandard. They were impressed, frankly.
Commissioners, I'm gonna have you call these comments to your commissioner comments at the end of the meeting, and you can certainly enlighten us all on your activities. I'd like to stay focused onto the, to the consent agenda item at hand. Thank you. On that, Gary, let's move along.
Great, thank you. Number three, approval of a revenue grant agreement with the State of Oregon Early Learning Division in Clackamas County on behalf of the Clackamas Early Learning Hub to support kindergarten readiness, partnership, and innovation summer programming. Amendment value is $258,636 for a maximum award of $790,919.27. No county general funds are involved. Go ahead, Rod.
Yes, and a little bit about these funds. The kindergarten readiness program promotes community and school partnerships in historically underserved communities that improve readiness for kindergarten at a local level by strengthening connection and collaboration between early care and the education sector. So this amendment actually brings more money into the county so we can keep that effort moving forward.
Thank you. Next?
Number four, approval of a revenue grant agreement with the State of Oregon Early Learning Division in Clackamas County on behalf of the Clackamas County Early Learning Hub to support and manage coordinated enrollment into the Preschool Promise Program. Grant award is $208,208.52. No county general funds are involved. Go ahead, Rod.
Yes, and this is also a state grant that comes to the Early Learning Hub. Services would include marketing, outreach, and recruitment, eligibility determination, and programming, and preschool promise program selection and placement. So it's a relationship we have with the state at the local level to keep, get kids connected to the right services. No general funds.
Chair, if I may?
Yep.
So, and I, first of all, I just wanted to put it out there, normally, we did this on Tuesday, so this is not...
Well, we're not doing it on Tuesday. Paul, there's been a change, so I suggest you just go with it and get the business done.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but...
And you can discuss whatever you want, but we have a change, and I think we're going to embrace this change today as we move forward.
Okay, well, I'm not aware of what that change is, Chair, but...
Well, the change is, Commissioner Savas, would you quit being difficult? You see the change in front of you. This is no different than what happens on Tuesday. We have elected to do it today because our departments need this business to be finished.
Yeah, I just assumed this was temporary. If yours...
Well, Commissioner Savas, just hang on to your boots.
Okay, so Rod, could you, with regard to our, well, I'm not sure you were part of our conversation last evening with childcare issues, and I know Learning Hub had come up in part of that discussion and understanding. How many, how many folks are we serving? How many kids are we serving?
I don't have that number available, but I can get that for you. I can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
And are you talking about all of the services that the Early Learning Hub provides, or this particular, this specific program?
Well, yeah, this, as you know, this is not my wheelhouse, but, you know, as of last evening, you know, that focus on childcare, and listening to some of those comments, I'm certainly more interested in learning more about that, and seeing it here on the agenda, you know, it seems like prime time to ask the question as far as understanding the impact, what I think lacked. You know what? We'll talk about it a different time. I don't want to, I don't want to make, take up any more time.
I can get the Early Learning Hub to put together a piece, an information piece for this board on one page, or give you some data and those type of things. They'd be pleased to do that.
Yeah, yeah, it seemed last night my colleagues were interested in this topic, but I'm not sure they're interested in discussing it today.
Okay.
Doesn't seem.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith, and thank you, Paul, for bringing it up. And I am thinking that because we're going through the consent agenda, like we would on a Tuesday, we would treat it the same. So I am very interested in what Paul was saying, and last night, we definitely understand that there is a critical emptiness in our service delivery system from the time that preschool ends and the time that parents get off from work. And there are, I believe, seven preschool programs that are funded through Oregon Promise. There's a significant economic challenge. You have to be at or below poverty to receive that support. There are openings throughout Clackamas County right now, and the real challenge is, is that they don't fit, the services that are provided don't fit the need, which we heard so clearly last night. So this is another topic that we do need to discuss further, especially if we're going to be looking at how we're recovering through our pandemic, and how we are going to meet the workforce challenges and needs. This is a really great first step, but it does not fully get to that where we're missing it. So, thank you.
Yes.
I will now entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Health, Housing, and Human Services items as presented by staff.
Seconded.
The motion has been moved by Commissioner Savas to approve the Health, Housing, and Human Services... human services, seconded by Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Schrader, I mean, Commissioner Fisher.
So there was one Board Order Number Two, which was Cascadia Behavioral Health that is on here, and we did not go over those.
Yes, I did announce Number Two and Rod discussed that.
Oh, he did? Okay. Well, I'm sorry. I take that back.
Any further discussion? Mary, please call the poll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
I'm going to abstain because I have to read Number Two.
Thank you. Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes three, zero, one. Gary, what's next?
Okay, thank you, Rod, very much. Next, we're still on board discussion items. Next is transportation and development. Mike Bezner, the Assistant Director of Transportation and Development, will present. Item one, authorization to purchase one 2022 Freightliner 114 SD truck with a 30-ton national crane installed from McCoy Freightliner of Portland through the State of Oregon Cooperative Contract Number 1640. Total cost is $497,067, funded through the county's road fund. No county general funds are involved. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Commissioners, this is funds in our 2122 budget that was approved to replace this crane that the one it's replacing, we purchased in 1981, 40 years old. Bridge Maintenance uses this and they use it for routine work and also emergency work to remove debris from bridges.
Any comments on this? So Mike, what are you going to do with your old truck and your old crane?
Auction it. That's how we get rid of our old equipment.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Oh, we're going to finish this. Go ahead.
All right, item two, authorization to purchase one 2022 Freightliner M2 106 truck with an N tire oil distributor rear body installed from McCoy Freightliner of Portland through the State of Oregon Cooperative Contract Number 1640. Total cost is $222,073, funded through the county's road fund. No county general funds are involved. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks. This one's also in our 2122 budget. This is replacing a truck that we purchased in 1985. So pretty old, 36 years old. We use this to spread tack coats before we do in-house paving projects. Gets used a lot. And we'll auction off the old one.
Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any clarifying questions of the presenter?
Sonya Fisher.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. This is for $497,000 for one Freightliner?
Mm-hmm.
And is that, is that up too? Is that what you expect to spend?
Well, it's, it's, it's the price we're paying on a cooperative, it's a price that the state had acquired in a contract, and it's a cooperative agreement. So we're latching on to it and purchasing it for that.
Okay. It seems like a lot of money, but I don't know what a Freightliner is actually.
It is a lot of money, but these things are very, very expensive. We had originally estimated $400,000 for the the crane and $300,000 for the distributor. So one came in a little higher, ones come in a little bit lower.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the transportation and development items as presented by staff.
Seconded.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Shaw and seconded by Commissioner Savas to approve the transportation and development item. Any further discussion? Mary, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes four, zero. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Mike. The final board discussion item is under elected officials, in this case, the Sheriff, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Mike Palmer from the Sheriff's Office will present. He is on Zoom today. The item number one, approval of a purchase with McLaughlin and Eardley Group, doing business as SinnerNet.com for purchase of products to outfit Sheriff's Office vehicles. The total cost is not to exceed $320,000, and it is funded by the county's general fund, which has already been budgeted in the county's Sheriff's Office. So Mike, please give a one or two-minute quick update on this, and then the board will ask any questions.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
It can be a little bit louder, please.
Could you please be a little louder?
Can you hear me now?
Just a moment. We're adjusting our sound.
Okay.
Okay, Mike, say a few more words.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're very low on sound. We have you at the max on our end, so anything you can do on your end. But go ahead.
Okay. I'll just speak louder.
That works.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. This request is for a purchase order through SirenNet to buy emergency equipment for the 2021, 2022 Sheriff's Office fleet. Equipment such as lights, sirens, brackets, seats, cages, the consoles, everything that takes a vehicle and turns it into a police emergency response vehicle would be considered under this purchase.
This goes with the the cruisers that we approved previously in the year. Is that right, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other clarifying questions for Commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Sheriff's Office item as presented by staff.
Seconded.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Shaw and seconded by Commissioner Savas. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mary, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion has been passed, has been approved. Commissioner Fisher, you had your light on?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I want to change my abstention on the first round of consent agenda items from abstain to yes, since I now have found it and was able to read it. Thank you so much.
Health, housing, and services vote will reflect a four, zero vote. Thank you very much for that, Commissioner. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Commissioners. Next is the consent agenda. Mary, would you please read the consent agenda?
There it is for us. Okay, very well. Scroll down. Under 3A transportation development, approval of the subcontract to collect infectious waste in the franchises held by Waste Management of Oregon, Inc. There is no financial impact. And again, under item B, elected officials, approval of the previous business meeting minutes.
As any Commissioner wish to remove any items from the consent agenda.
Move for approval?
Seconded.
Commissioner Savas has moved for approval. Commissioner Shaw has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mary, please call the poll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you very much. Is that it, Gary?
That is it for consent agenda.
We will now move to the public communication portion of the meeting and shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public comment. I will take the in-person communications first. I have one blue card here in the room. Les Poole, please come up, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. A number I keep in my head when I hear about purchasing equipment is that about two years ago, it cost us $600,000 for a middle-of-the-road fire truck in Gladstone. They are not cheap. I have some thoughts to share on a couple of subjects. And one of them is that there seems to be a double standard in how how things that come from the public especially are addressed by staff at times and by various Commissioners. We all have our leanings. We all have our opinions. But it seems that when certain voices or certain folks contact the BCC with outrage about issues or claims about what Mr. Shaw here has said or not said, those get a lot of credence. I've lost track of how many more important issues than that that don't get credence or responses. And I would only suggest that partisanship needs to be left at the door and that the hardest thing to do is to not be easily offended. The hardest thing to do is to remain objective. And sometimes we get in our own way, including myself. That did happen here a couple of weeks ago with the well-crafted resolution in support of the workers that are being threatened with losing their jobs. That turned into a unfortunate situation where two of the Commissioners, frankly, got in the way of it. And Commissioner Savas motioned to table, and there was a three to two vote, leaving the issue unresolved. I would ask, and if I had the authority, I would demand that that issue be put back on the agenda. And while I tend to support and agree with Paul on many, many of his decisions, it was a mistake to not move that forward because of your concern over the partisanship that I just referred to. Got about 40 seconds here, and I want to share something that will raise some eyebrows. There has been a tremendous response now that the public understands what's detolling, what's the tolling all about. And we will be filing, we will be filing a statewide initiative to require a public vote on what ODA is planning. There'll be an announcement at 11 o'clock. Folks are welcome to show up at the Oregon City End of the Old Historic Bridge. That'll be Saturday. It's a big push to get this done, but the public is ready. So look for that. We're going to be filing this. And by all means, the public, the public supports what we're doing. So more to come, and thanks always.
Thank you. That's all the in-person comments I have. Mary, do you have anybody online?
Yes, Chair, we have one person registered for comment. That's Julie Skarpohl. Julie, if you could please unmute yourself and please state your name and area of residence.
Great, my name is Julie Skarpohl, S-K-A-R-P-H-O-L, and I live in Milwaukee, Oregon. I just first want to publicly say thanks to the county, especially Commissioner Fisher and Kimberly DeSantis. I was the person who spoke last week about school quarantines. And they took a lot of time this week to help me understand who's making the school quarantine protocol. I think last week we were all a little confused as to how that protocol was coming about. And instead of just dismissing me, the county took the time to engage with me and help me find answers. And the way you listen and engage is very commendable, and it made me feel very heard. So thank you. I now understand that OHA sets the quarantine protocols for schools, but I would like to speak to you today to ask if you have any sway, any say with OHA to help engage with them, to help students and families in Clackamas County be able to stay in school. School quarantines are highly disruptive to students' learnings, learning and their lives. I'm not talking about students who are symptomatic or have COVID. These are most of the time children who have zero signs of COVID, but they've been around somebody who tested positive, and they're being kept out of school for 10, 14, and sometimes even 24 days. Most receive nothing more than worksheets and some videos to watch for that time that they're out of school. The free breakfasts and lunches that the schools offer these kids are not offered to quarantine students. I would really encourage you to ask OHA, do we have data that shows that this protocol is necessary? How many quarantine students end up actually contracting COVID? When I asked my school district, they didn't track how many quarantine students end up with COVID. And I'm not too sure if OHA is tracking that either. So I know that LA County and New York school districts have collected that data. And after finding out that only point two, the point five percent of quarantine students ended up contracting COVID, they modified and even did away with their quarantine protocols. So I would encourage you to ask OHA to at least look at the data that they're, that they have on this. Most importantly, keep in mind that a lot of, some of the students that are being quarantined are homeless in abusive homes, homes without food, or homes that are highly unstable. I know this because I work with some of these families in Clackamas County. Quarantines are very dangerous and harmful for these students. Is our current quarantine protocol hurting more children than it is helping is a real question that we need to ask. Schools all over the country are adopting shorter quarantine times with proof of a negative test. Others are adopting a test-to-stay alternative where exposed students test every day for five to seven days and can go to school if their test is negative. In comparison to the rest of the country, Oregon students are yet again being held back in their education because of COVID protocols set by Oregon. If this was March of 2020, this protocol would make more sense. But we know more about this virus and have better tools to fight it. Our policies should reflect that. The last tool we should use would be to disrupt students' learning more than what has already been done over the last 18 months. So please engage with OHA about modifying the disruptive quarantine protocols that they're making students live under. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Julie, stay online. I mean, you asked some really interesting questions that I would be interested in the answers. I hope we have clarification on your questions. And oftentimes, when you call in, we don't hear as well in the hearing room as we do in the recorded version of this. So I'm going to have a staff member follow up with a phone call to you. I want to know what those questions are. And then I think it behooves us to reach out to OHA and possibly get this information and challenge their protocol on that. I would certainly want to know this. I think the question she asks, every single parent in our county would want to know why on that. Julie, thank you very much. Expect a phone call on that. Commissioners, yes, Julie?
Oh, I just said thank you. I'm sorry.
You bet. As you noticed, Commissioners, I let these two particular speakers go along because we only had one in the room and only one online. And that is my purview. To do that, I felt it was necessary they complete their sentence in the couple seconds remaining on that. Mary, anybody else?
That's all I have on my list, Chair.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public communication portion of the meeting, and we will move on. Gary, do you have an item?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Next is county administrator update. I always like to share good news that occurs here at the county with our employees and our services. Today's no exception. First, I'd like to share with you several thank you notes we received from members of the community acknowledging our transportation and road crews for their work throughout the county. Brainerd from Redland wrote, "A special thank you to Clackamas County road maintenance staff for their prompt attention for moving the road signs at the Fisher's Mill Road and Redland Road intersection, and for the many things like shoulder maintenance that the county has been on top of in our area. These improvements are the somewhat hidden things that minimize accident potential. This is a huge step forward. Lives and injuries have and will be saved." Linda from Damascus wrote, "Thanks to the road crew for the repairs on Sunshine Valley Road. We are grateful. It's our only way out, and it was really rough. Blessings on you." Janice from Oregon City wrote, "Thank you for the street-sweeping sandalwood road. It was really needed." Pam from Damascus wrote, "I want to thank you for the road, I want to thank you to the road team for painting the lines on roads like Clackamas River Road. As the rain gets closer at night, they are a godsend in many areas." Though thank you to these members of the public who wrote these very nice notes, and thank you to our outstanding transportation and roads crew for their ongoing excellent service. Next, our school-based health centers program through our health centers received a $250,000 grant from the Care Oregon Emergency Relief Fund, and another $105,000 from the North Clackamas School District to open two new health clinics this fall in county schools. The clinics will officially open in October in the new Adrian Nelson High School and the newly renovated Clackamas High School, both located in the Happy Valley area. The North Clackamas School District will now have one clinic in each of its four high schools. Clackamas County Public Health supports seven of these health clinics within schools and five medically sponsored by Clackamas Health Centers, which are located on school campuses throughout the county. We do provide health and wellness for all ages and for children, our young adults, kids, where the kids are. Those are my updates today. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. That's very exciting. We have seven clinics now. I would like to know, Gary, I don't expect any other question. Does every school district have a public have a public health nurse on their campuses? And just let me know that later. I would hope that they would. Maybe they do. But I can remember hearing not long ago that might have been an issue. Thank you very much. Now it's time for Commissioner Communication. Up first is Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. Nice to see you today and hoping Martha's doing good. I think she's in San Diego.
Sunny San Diego? Oh, darn.
I know. Poor Martha, doing all that work there in the sunshine. I talked a little bit last week about the Clackamas Service Center Gala that I was able to attend virtually. I've been in touch with Deborah Mason, who is Executive Director there, and I just wanted to report that they have raised $110,000, just over that from 158 donors. And one of the highlights, from my perspective, was a very short video. I don't know, did everybody attend the gala? If you did, I won't share it, but it's a short video of a story of real-life impacts of what our services here at Clackamas County have done through the Metro 300, and I would just like to share it with you now.
To me, home means a warm place to stay where you can be safe and not having to worry about whether these guys are okay or not. I was a truck driver for close to 40 years, and I loved every minute of it. I was doing pretty well. We were a successful trucking company. My truck broke down. It went into the shop, and I decided to get the whole exhaust system changed. I ended up losing my haul job, sold the other truck. I was out of work for weeks, then months, and I ended up living in my van, staying in Walmart parking lot. Anybody can turn homeless in a heartbeat. When you first turn homeless, you try to be inconspicuous. It's really hard for somebody to reach out for help. You feel ashamed. You feel embarrassed. You panic, but there's nothing you can do about it. This is Bagheera, and he was such a comfort kitty. He kept me going, him and my dogs. If it wasn't for my animals, I would have probably gone bonkers. I had gotten a job at Dollar Tree stocking at night. I started coming over to the Clackamas Service Center to utilize their showers. Frank would always make sure to get me in either first or last so that I could be clean so I could go to work. Then I started utilizing more of their services, lunch and socialize and coffee and stuff like that. I've made a lot of friends through the service center. The Outside In Medical Van that comes here on Tuesdays and Thursdays has been incredible. I'm still going to them today. They're my primary doctors. I started pitching in and helping clean up after lunch. I used to work in here in the clothing room, volunteered more and more, and started doing the laundry, like the towels after showers. And of course, this is before the wheelchair. I was able to walk back then and everything. And the reason I'm in the wheelchair is because I drove a truck, and it just wore my hips out. COVID started, and they started a program called Metro 300, where they were trying to get 300 of the most vulnerable older homeless citizens into places. We got a voucher for an apartment. And then my name came up on a preference section aid, so now I have permanent housing. I immediately loved my apartment. I was so happy to be someplace sheltered, someplace where I could be warm, someplace where I could be safe. That's a big deal. It's my happy spot. Clackamas Service Center is a good resource to turn to when you're homeless or down on your luck. They help a lot of people in a lot of ways. I could not even imagine if the service center wasn't here when I went homeless. I would be lost.
Yeah. So I just wanted to share that. It was a story that really touched me, as I'm sure it has touched all of us. Our services and the work we do in Clackamas County and with partnership with our nonprofits makes such a difference in people's lives.
It is. We've all been there. We've all supported it, and that's a story that could have had a very different outcome, but it's really a success story. And I expect, I'd love to hear an update on how she's doing after her surgery.
Yes.
That woman looks very familiar to me. I think she's been around someplace, but I can't put my finger on it.
Yeah. Well, I've been in touch with Deborah Mason, and maybe we'll have the opportunity for Sharon to come visit with us someday.
Thank you very much for bringing that forward.
That would be really nice.
Yeah, appreciate that. And it's nice they've raised so much money. I have noticed that in nonprofits that I've been tending, I've been attending many events, and the amount of money that's being contributed to efforts like this really is astounding. Thank you for that. Up next is, you finished, Commissioner?
Oh, yes.
Up next is Commissioner Savas.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, thanks for that video. I know one of the first things I got connected to was the Clackamas Service Center over 10 years ago, and spend a day out there or a morning out there or an afternoon, and you'll get to see the significance of the need and also the people that are dropping off clothing and food and just people just pouring their hearts out for, for those folks. You know, the other event I think that struck us all really hard is when this facility burned down, and there was a fire. And the outpouring of financial support, it was fantastic, the fact that they kept it together and they still provided services while trying to rebuild the facility. And it's a far nicer, more sound facility today with a lot more services, bathrooms, more, more healthcare there than ever before. So it's just a great bunch of folks, and the volunteers and people on the board ought to be commended for their, for their work, so. Shifting to what I wanted to talk about is kind of give you all somewhat of a report. Commissioner Schrader did attend a lot of it. It was our C4 Retreat that we had on Friday evening and into Saturday morning. The topic was really transit for the most part. And our retreat, our C4 is the Clackamas County Quarantine Committee. It's made up of cities, represented from cities and the county and special districts and our CPOs, hamlets, villages, fire districts, and so forth. So a good representation of the service providers and the jurisdictions within Clackamas County. And our topic was transit and discussed our, the needs and some of the projects that are ongoing, and our challenge with funding is obviously a big part of this. And the, at the annual retreat, we kind of also paved the way for really agenda setting for the rest of the year and work on that. And some of those towards the end of the C4 Retreat were some of the broader topics like transportation and housing and homelessness and shelters and, you know, a lot of those issues. We have a lot of new elected officials and are not totally cognizant of how all these systems mesh together and our history and efforts in that area. But it was a virtual retreat. Normally, we spend actually a lot more time and face-to-face at a location within the county. So it was a shorter, more abbreviated session, but again, more, more focused. So I just want to just thank everyone for attending. Typically, we have about 50, 60 people at the live event, and these were more like around in the mid twenties about what attendance was. So I just want to thank everyone for attending. And Trent Wilson, just our guiding staff member to keep a C4 together and a lot of their stuff did a great job in putting that together. We thought we would meet live this year, and then again, because of COVID outbreak, we ended up going virtual. And so just appreciate that. Towards the end, again, I brought up the topic, just kind of making people aware of previous discussions with actually what we touched on earlier today, and that was about displacement shelters and the challenges. I touched on that last week and then carry that into the retreat. But my report is that it was a pretty good retreat and a couple of cities we didn't, were not present, unfortunately. Would have been nice to have Lake Oswego present and Estacada and I think Sandy. Those were the three cities I think that didn't participate. And lots going on, so I'm sure that there's a lot of other priorities for all of us. But just want to just give you all that update. And interesting to figure out how we, if there is a scheduling change or a structure change in how we work, I'd really like to know what that is. I didn't, I don't know of it, but I'll look forward to any, any information about that. That's what I have for today.
Thank you, Paul. Commissioner Shoal, you're up.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Clackamas County. On farm production, Friday night, I had the pleasure of attending the Harvest Dinner at the North Willamette Research and Education Center in Aurora. It was a fun opportunity to learn what the NWREC does for Clackamas County in the way of agricultural research and education. Clackamas County produces over 220 commercial crops, but there are many acres of ag land that are not being utilized. If you have a few acres or a few hundred acres and you would like to augment your income through farming, the North Willamette Research and Education Center can help you find that crop that would be optimal for you and your land. Take a look at their Small Farm Program on their website. Also, give Leah Sunquist at the OSU Extension Center a call. She's got a lot of information. She's right here on Warner-Milney Road, and she can help you get started. Making your land productive may give you added income while adding to the county's productivity and prosperity. On transportation and tolling, the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce put on a Zoom on Monday morning with Mandy Putney, I-205 Tolling Project Manager for ODOT. It was very informative. I asked several questions like, how much is it going to cost to set up the tolling infrastructure? What is the duration of tolling once it begins? What is, what percent of each tolling dollar will be required to pay for tolling administration and operations? She didn't have answers. They're still working on those things, but they're going to get ready to push out $27 million for engineering to answer some of these questions. My concern is that the people of the county need to be aware of the potential for tolling, and it could be very expensive. And I would like to make sure everybody knows about our town hall for the month of December, on one December, which will be about tolling. Please read up on the issue and join us on one December for that very important town hall. And thank you, Laura Edmonds, from the North Clackamas County Chamber of Commerce for a very informative meeting. On land use planning, yesterday, the Board had a land use hearing on the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning and Development Ordinance on increased building density with the objective to increase housing availability in this county. Stay informed on this matter. There'll be another hearing on 3 November. And I thank you, Dylan Blaylock, last night for a very informative town hall on childcare. This is a huge issue in the county, and I know parents out there who are concerned about this will be happy to know that the county's going to look at this with a lot more intensity, I'm sure. Finally, I'd like to mention that on October 12th at 6:00 PM in Oregon City, there's going to be a meeting on homelessness in Oregon City. They're going to talk about ways to get people off the street into permanent shelter. If you go to the Oregon City website, you can learn more about that very important meeting. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. Yeah, we've done some really, I think, amazing work this week as a Commissioner, like Commissioner Shoal said last night. We had a listening session town hall via Zoom on childcare concerns and needs. And we were almost, we were all heartfelt by the callers who came in, parents who explained the obstacles to childcare, the costs. And we also had several providers call in explaining to us their obstacles to providing childcare. And it's very informative. We will probably move forward on something in Clackamas County. Uncertain what it is. I would like to explore the obstacles of regulation for home childcare, if there are any, what those are. I think that is a good way for us to start. You know, I had my daughter in three different home childcare facilities, not facilities, homes, growing up. It was a marvelous experience. All three of them were actually friends who decided to do that. Some were temporarily, some were continual, because they had young children of their own. And we were friends, and we started up so. And I, and, and what I learned when they were doing it, and this is a long time ago, some of the costs were prohibitive. A thousand dollars for a license for a home childcare? Oh, come on, people. That's ridiculous. So I want to look at that. I also wanted to explore some ideas I had last time when I was a Commissioner. I'm not prepared to talk about those today, but I'd like to put those out there. This is a very important workforce issue. If people don't have adequate, sustainable, holistic childcare, they are not going to go to work. And we see hiring signs all across Clackamas County. We see, we have hiring situations here at Clackamas County. It's a very, very important issue for the economy. Childcare may be the driver, the engine of our economy moving forward. Yesterday, we also had a land use hearing, which I believe is one of the most important land use hearings we will ever have because the decision we will make will impact generations, and that is affordable housing. And it's very important that we get it right. And as I stated before, we can't be so zealous in trying to solve today's problem that we ignore the problems of the future. And we will bring that hearing back. It's important that Clackamas County keep its livability quotient. We do not want to look like some areas in Portland, which I know none of us want that to happen. So we're going to be working on the parking densities and the parking situation as we go ahead with our affordable housing. I look forward to all of our Commissioners' input. As you know, you all will be providing on input. We'll bring it back, and we will filter out through what we want to do with that. So we've done some really good work, Commissioners, this week. I appreciate all your participation in this. Seeing no items before the Board, we are adjourned.